It is working. Okay.
Stand for the flag, suit.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It's a republic which stands one nation under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sunshine notice, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners' public meeting for Tuesday, March 18, 2025. The time is 7:08. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, notice that this meeting was published in the November 21st, 2024, issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board and a copy is on file in the municipal clerk's office. Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Tucci?
Here.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Here.
Commissioner Petracca? Mayor?
Present.
All present mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Minutes, please.
We have Board of Commissioner meeting minutes for February 18, 2025.
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
And that's it for minutes, Mayor.
Thank you. Communications, please.
Thank you. We have a social affair permit application for the Friends of the Nutley Library for Wednesday, May 21st, 2025, from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM at 93 Booth Drive. We have an event application for Holy Family Church. It's their 34th Annual Italian Festival to be held on Thursday, September 25th through Sunday, September 28th, 2025, at various times at the Holy Family Church Parking Lot at 28 Brookline Avenue. And we also have an event application for the Nutley Thriving Survivors for their annual walk for Sunday, October 5th, 2025, from John H. Walker Middle School to Yantico Park and back. Motion, please.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye. Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Here.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
And that's it for communications.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have a proclamation on for this evening and I'll turn it over to Commissioner Tucci for that.
Thank you, Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, this is one of those moments, all right, in a public servant's career, all right, that we all strive for, all right? All the meetings that we go to, all of the events that we go to, all of the programs that we attend, all right? If they help someone to succeed and they help further their education and their goals, all right, to move on, that's why we're here, okay? In addition to the routine government stuff, but improving people's lives is what government should be focusing on. I am so proud this evening to offer this proclamation on behalf of the Board of Commissioners because we have one of our children, a young lady now, who started with us as a very young child, all right, who has succeeded and has not only made herself and her family proud, but our entire township and all of the things that we do to make our children succeed. So having said that, I offer this proclamation on behalf of the entire Board of Commissioners. Whereas the New Jersey Governor's Award in Arts Education has since 1980 celebrated the outstanding artistic achievements of young individuals, recognizing their dedication, their talent, and excellence in the arts. And whereas Alexis Hamlin has achieved an historic milestone as the first student from Nutley High School to be nominated for and receive this prestigious award, marking, making a remarkable achievement for both the school and the community. And whereas this accolade represents the highest honor a high school student can attain in their field of study, exemplifying Alexis' extraordinary commitment, unparalleled talent, and relentless pursuit of excellence. And whereas Alexis began her journey in musical theater many years ago in Nutley's very own Parks and Recreation Department, laying the foundation for her passion and accomplishments in the arts. And whereas Alexis has devoted countless hours to mastering her craft, demonstrating passion, perseverance, and artistic brilliance that shine both on and off the stage. And whereas Alexis has not only excelled in the arts, but also academically earning recognition as an honor student at Nutley High School, serving as true president of the International Thespian Honor Society and contributing as a valued member of the Spanish Honor Society and the Tri-M Honor Society. And whereas Alexis has been honored with the National Coral Award and recognized as Section Leader of the Year, further highlighting her leadership dedication and unwavering commitment to excellence. And whereas the Nutley community takes great pride in fostering and prioritizing the arts, ensuring continued emphasis on creative and cultural development for future generations, now therefore be it resolved that we commend Alexis Hamlin for her exceptional achievements in the arts and academics, extending our heartfelt congratulations on this monumental and well-deserved recognition. Alexis' success serves as a beacon of inspiration to her peers and a source of immense pride for the Nutley community. We look forward to her continued contributions to the arts and beyond. Congratulations, Alexis Hamlin. Alexis, would you like to come up and say a few words?
Right here. Yes. Good evening, everyone. I'm truly honored to be here tonight and receive this proclamation. This is an incredible recognition and I want to express my heartfelt thanks to the commissioners for honoring me with this award. First and foremost, I want to sincerely thank Commissioner Tucci. My journey in musical theater began in Nutley Parks and Recreation, and I am forever grateful for the amazing programs you've championed. Your dedication has created opportunities that have shaped my life and allowed me to discover my passion. I would also like to extend my deepest gratitude to Mr. Gaines for his unwavering support, mentorship, and guidance over these past four years. Your belief in me and your encouragement have been instrumental in my growth as a performer and most importantly, as a person. To Mr. V and Mr. Scarpelli, your passion for our programs is truly inspiring. It's because of leaders like you that students like me are able to pursue and achieve our goals. Your commitment to fostering talent and creating opportunities is something that I will always share. To Janine Grzewinski and Mrs. Polynice, my second moms, you've always been there to support me through my many trials and tribulations and also through my successes. And for that, I am more than grateful. To everyone who came out tonight to support me, thank you. Your presence mean the world to me and I'm so grateful for this community that surrounds and uplifts me. Finally, I want to express my deepest love and gratitude to my family. Your constant support and encouragement has been my foundation. Thank you for always believing in me and helping me pursue my dreams. As I continue my musical theater journey in college and beyond, I carry all of these incredible experiences, lessons, and memories with me. Thank you again for this wonderful honor. It is truly a moment I will never, ever forget. Thank you.
Okay. Alexis, please come up for a picture. But while Alexis is coming forward for the photo, you know, it's often been said that it takes a village. Well, Alexis, your village is here tonight to continue supporting you. God bless you and congratulations in everything you do.
You're welcome. Please. We need to why. Okay.
Congratulations. Congratulations. One of your success stories. This is great, Mr. Vick.
Lenny.
Hold up. Can you just hold on a second? The, the.
Because they took the word tobacco out of the words.
The intro.
That was like.
This one is going to be an intro.
So. They worked.
Where's the tobacco?
We did.
Yeah, worse.
Yeah, but then. Then Justin had to go. Then I gave him what he.
This is a intro too, right? We're going to do. What's the date?
March 27. Today is the end. Our case. Our case. And it's going to be advertised on March 27th, but I guess we want the public hearing. The public hearing is April 15th. Right? You have your finger on it. Yeah.
Yeah, I think we have to step up.
We will wait.
Yeah. That's what.
You're.
Nobody was interested. Not today. Yeah, because they're learning more about the implications of what we teach the levels are today. And the violations of the. Yeah.
This is, this is the public hearing day.
Okay.
So that's the day.
Okay.
That's my.
Congratulations to Alexis. We're back on the record. We, I see we have no reports. Bills, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Bill list for March 18, 2025. Public Affairs, $376,846.91. Revenue and Finance, $3,999,923.55. Public Safety, $47,722.2. Public Works, $103,902.58. Parks and Public Property, $339,850.75. Water and Sewer Utility, $350,895.71. Payroll as of March 14th, 2025. Regular payroll total, $962,116.15. Overtime payroll total, $51,935.86. Total payroll, $1,014,052.1, for a grand total of $6,233,193.53.
Move the bills. Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Abstained.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
At this time, we have public comment on agenda items only. This is public comment on agenda items only. If you wish to be heard on agenda items only, please approach the microphone and state your name for the record. Seeing none, Board of Commissioner announcements. Commissioner Evans?
Nothing for me this evening.
Commissioner Tucci?
Good, Mayor.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Nothing.
I have a couple things. Sorry to break the trend. This is Women's History Month and we will be having continuing events throughout the month of March. Tomorrow, we have the free health screening for melanoma. And next Monday, this upcoming Monday, I should say, the 24th, we're having another information session for the Rise Beyond program. That'll be held in the media room at 6:30 in the evening in Nutley High School. Ordinance introductions. Commissioner Evans or Commissioner Tucci? Either one of you want it?
I'll jump in. Ordinance number 38, 3580. This ordinance is for improvements to our IT infrastructure as well as our fiber capacity. Before I move it, Commissioner, do you want to comment on some of the provisions of this?
Just that all of these improvements are absolutely necessary. I mean, we have an outstanding IT department that keep all of our information protected. I mean, and the onslaught of attacks that we get, both near and far, are unparalleled, I think. I mean, every day with something is happening where someone's trying to break into our system or one of our programs. So as the commissioner said, for the reasons stated in this ordinance, this is something that's absolutely necessary.
Yeah. Okay, I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertised in the Nutley Sun together with the notice required by law. And that further consideration of said ordinance or the final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on April 15th, 2025. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans, did you want to reintroduce the tobacco ordinance on behalf of the Board of Commissioners?
Yeah, I can. This, this ordinance was originally on the books. We had to modify it because of the addition of hemp in the township as well as some corrections that the, from a licensing standpoint from the Essex County Prosecutor's Office in terms of a conflict with state statute. This is an ordinance that is on behalf of the Board of Commissioners governing the regulations in the sale of tobacco, hemp, and related products to minors. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertised in the Nutley Sun together with the notice required by law and that further consideration of said ordinance, final passage by the Board of Commissioners, be held at its second reading on April 15th, 2025. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye. Commissioner Scarpelli, I see you have an ordinance on for introduction tonight.
Yes, Mayor. This is ordinance number 3581 and it modifies the sewer utility ordinance. You know, this has been a work in progress. We're a little over six months into this utility and our goal is always to make it as fair as possible. So some of the changes, if I can highlight those, is we reduce the minimum charge from 1,000 cubic feet to 500 cubic feet, which will coincide with the water ordinance. So for those people who are using less than 500 cubic feet, the minimum charge will be half of what it was for the thousand, under 1,000. So we are responding to some of the issues that have been raised. Instead of the pool and sprinkler credit, we're going to have two options. One is that we're going to do a 12-month average of your water consumption and that'll be your third quarter sewer bill. So usually, water consumption during the summer is a little higher, whether it's from pools or sewers or just using the shower more. But this is going to be an average. And the second option is an installation of a sewer deduction meter, which somebody could have that hooked up with specifications out of the engineering department. And that would give you the exact amount of water that's being used outside of the home, like your sprinklers or whatever else you use for outside, your water in the lawn. There'd be a cost, obviously, for the meter and the, to install it. And someone will have to weigh the options of which option they would prefer on that summer reading. In addition, we've defined a lot of our residential units and what they are and adjusted the chart, therefore, going forward. And if we look at our residential areas, we now have three tiers, a tier one, a tier two, and a tier three. The tier one will be for four and below units. Tier two will be condos and co-ops, and tier three will be five and above units. And that rate chart is included in the ordinance. Commissioner Evans, anything I missed?
No, Mayor. I think, I think it addresses pretty much all of the questions that have been raised by residents to look at what we can do to adjust the rates to be fairer and more equitable. I also, you left out that, looking at this ordinance, it's by far and away much more than what other municipalities are even considering or contemplating doing in terms of this addressing the questions that have been raised by our residents. As I reserve the statement that says, once we get done looking at all of this, there still is, there are still our water and sewer bills to be paid. So it may ultimately, as we get more data, affect the rates. But I think you've done, you know, and a credit to your department, being patient, taking all of the comments that have been raised, all of the complaints that have been raised, and coming up with something that's very thoughtful.
I think the girl's down in the cage and Zafara taking the bulk of the telephone calls and dealing with the public and not always easy to do.
Yeah.
But they do that on our behalf, which we are grateful for. So with that, I move this ordinance be passed to a second reading, advertised in the Nutley Sun together with the notice required by law. That further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners to be held at its second reading on April 15th, 2025. I move the ordinance. Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Thank you. We have no further ordinances on for introduction. Commissioner Evans, do you want to take the ordinance on for its public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor. 3579 is actually funding the, some additional garbage cans that were required. Mayor, I think that's really more appropriate for you, so I'll say yes to the money. You say reason why.
Thank you. Yes, so we, we did have an initial run of the smaller garbage cans, the 64 gallons. And we're going through them pretty quickly and so we wanted to replenish our stock and increase our stock in these 64 gallons. So this will allow us to do that, so that way we're not, we're able to make sure that everyone who is right-sized in terms of the cart that they want for their garbage needs.
Open it up for public.
I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to be heard on ordinance number 3579, please approach the microphone and state your name for the record. Seeing none, I move to close.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
And before we go to resolutions, I did have one additional announcement. I just wanted to update the community in terms of what's going on with the Chicolini property. We have signed a contract for sale with a developer. The developer is still doing some due diligence. However, we're going to be getting a total compensation of four and a half million. We're going to be getting a parklet. We're going to be getting 50 additional spots than we already have at that location. The benefits to the community is substantial and it's going to spark redevelopment in the entire area. So this is going to be a boon for the community. And, you know, I've only come in halfway through this process and so I'm excited to announce it. But anyone else, you guys have been here the entire time. You guys want to share your thoughts on this, this update?
I would just add that, and Commissioner, the Hazmat Building had to be relocated. And once, once the project moves before, through the planning board with plan and final site plan, we should receive payment for the municipal property. That's, I would add that the existing 75 spots that we do have will now be part of a structured parking garage. Yeah, so there's, that's a huge cost to a developer to do that. You know, the spaces run about $33,000 per space versus a surface spot. So getting that included into the deal and having those dedicated to the public is a very significant retention to help the economic development of the area. And then ultimately, once the deal, the builder completes the build and moves to permanent financing, we will receive a million dollars for the relocation of the Hazmat Building, which we've already, and you might comment on it, Commissioner, about the preparations that we've made to relocate that equipment elsewhere in the township using available space. It's a long time in coming. I'm glad to hear this week that it's now an executed deal.
Anyone else want to add anything?
Yeah, I just want to let everyone know how happy I am that this day has finally arrived and this, this has been a total team project. There isn't one person, in my opinion, who should, should take credit solely because everyone played a part in this, all right? And I feel like Commissioner Evans has just said, I believe this will be the catalyst for redevelopment all the way down Franklin Avenue. I'm very happy that we were able to negotiate an additional 50 parking spaces because I know many of the businesses were concerned about that. It's, it's always a tough go when you're negotiating with developers. I mean, we go way back to the Perkins Eastman days, Commissioner.
Yes.
Petracca, and when we, when we were told that that'll never happen and that's moving along a bit slower than, than we would like it to, all right? But we've now claimed victory on two major projects. The Swim Club was the first one, which was bogged down for a while and some legal issues, which we got beyond. And I believe that's moving forward nicely. Now we have the Chicolini Project, as we refer to it. And our last project to close out will be, are renegotiations on three and dealing with the folks at Prism and keeping this town moving in the right direction. So I just want to congratulate everyone and tell you that this day is a long time coming and I look forward to the ceremonial signing.
As do I. Commissioner Scarpelli or Petracca?
You know, coming here a little over 16 years ago from the private sector, you know, I never realized how slow government moves. But it moves slow, but as long as you're making progress every year, it's a positive thing. And this has taken a lot longer than anybody ever thought it would when we started this. But we're here. Our goals from the beginning were to spur redevelopment, retain parking down in that end of town and control what happened on the property. And I think we've done all that with the redevelopment plan and we'll hold the developers' feet to the fire as we move forward. But this is one step forward. What I think, that end of town will be a big boom and spur other redevelopment in that area. So I'm happy where this day has come.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to say also, it's, you know, it's been a snail's pace at times and this happened way back in 100 years ago when I was actually the mayor. But I'm glad to see that it's coming to fruition. And also, I just would like to say that, you know, I am around town all day long, every day, and I do hear, you know, the negative parts of it and people saying, you know, there's too many apartments in town already and that, you know, the school systems are overcrowded and, you know, I'd just like to say that, you know, you look at our, you know, other towns in New Jersey that are really beautiful towns, Westfield, Princeton, all these towns are doing the same thing because this is really the wave of the future. You know, and I believe that, you know, you can't. And I believe that, you know, you can't stop progress. I would like to say that we do it smartly and wisely, and we try to strike a balance, not to overdo it. And, you know, again, you know, businesses on Franklin Avenue, a lot of them are struggling. I think this will create a well of people that'll actually come down from these apartments and shop, you know, again in Nutley. And, you know, I had a person come into my store last year and said, you know, the traffic on Franklin Avenue, and, you know, you guys are developing too much and things like that. And I said to him, what would you rather have? Nobody on Franklin Avenue? You know, that's our main street. I'm not for development on side streets. But our main drag, it should be vibrant, and there should be traffic. There should be foot traffic, and our businesses, who donate an awful lot of money to organizations all around town, should, you know, profit and not struggle like they have been. The parking is a grand slam, not even a home run to me. In two thousand and twelve, when I was the mayor, we, you know, called on professionals, and they said something that stood in my head. You know, Franklin Avenue is long and narrow. And without the parking on our north side and south side, which hopefully this is contagious and it works its way down, Franklin Avenue is not even possible. So to acquire the parking with this project and give, you know, give our township a great look. And like we said, when we had some opposition here, we live here too, and we don't want to hurt anybody. We want our community to stay vibrant and, you know, bring us to the future, not go backwards. And I'd just like to commend everybody on this board. You know, all of us, you know, had had a pretty chance in the middle seat. Tom, you've done a great job with the finances, you know, Mauro and Joe, you know, this, you know, all the input that we did. And, you know, it took a long time because we wanted to get it right, you know? And I think we have accomplished that. Our new mayor has been on it, like White Don Rice. John, you did a great job coming in here last year and, and, you know, kind of sealing the deal with our team up here because I believe we are. And sorry to be wrong-winded, but it's been a long time coming, and I just want to thank everybody for their input.
One more thing, Mayor.
Sure.
One of the other things that we said from the beginning was to get some open space on Franklin Avenue. And we did that, which will have some outdoor seating and a restaurant, which is part of redevelopment plan. So there's a couple of other things I forgot my first go-around, but I wanted to come back to.
Absolutely, and I do want to extend my congratulations to all of you because, as I said, I wasn't here for the initial go-around. But you guys had the foresight and the wherewithal because I know you guys got a lot of criticism to go forward with this plan, and it's shaping out to be a very positive one for the community. So congratulations to all of you. And like everyone said, I hope this spurs some additional vibrancy and redevelopment on Franklin Avenue. Moving on to resolutions, Commissioner Evans?
Thank you. It's a great time to talk about successful tax court appeals. Ended on a high note, right? Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley in the County of Essex, State of New Jersey. The Treasurer Bean is hereby authorized to refund overpayment of property taxes in the amount of seventeen thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars and forty cents for said years due to successful tax court judgments for the properties listed in the resolution. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petraco.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
My next resolution is extending our temporary budget authorization for the municipal budget for both the operating budget as well as the water sewer utility. We will be introducing our two thousand and twenty-five budget on April first, which is next week. However, we are allowed by statute through continuing resolutions to make sure that the government continues to operate. Whereas it is necessary to provide additional appropriation in the calendar year twenty-five temporary budget to make available the monies necessary for the continuance of the township services during the temporary budget period. Whereas no adequate provision has been made in the calendar year temporary budget for the aforementioned purpose. In NJSA forty-eight colon, forty-eight twenty provides for the creation of an emergency temporary appropriation of the purposes mentioned above. Whereas the total temporary budget resolution adopted in the calendar year two thousand and twenty-five pursuant to the provisions of NJSA forty-eight colon four nineteen through twenty includes, including this resolution totals a current fund of twenty-eight million, twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars and fifteen cents. The water sewer utility, four million, six hundred and four dollars, six hundred and four thousand, two hundred and two dollars and twenty-six cents. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley that the following emergency temporary appropriations be made, and that a certified copy of this resolution is transmitted to the Chief Financial Officer for her records. And I believe transmitting it to the Division of Local Governmental Services, Local Governmental Services as necessary. I move this for all of the accounts listed for all of the municipal departments and the water utility as listed in the resolution. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petraco.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, New Jersey, that in accordance with the provision of RS forty-eight colon four dash fifty-eight, the following transfers of appropriations in the two thousand and twenty-four appropriation reserves being the same are hereby authorized and approved. Economic Development, O K, seventeen thousand, five hundred, two, from that to the Treasurer's Office, so any seventeen thousand, five hundred. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli. Commissioner Petraco. Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, whereas the Department of Parks and Public Property, determined due to unforeseen circumstances, families had to cancel participations in programs offered, and whereas the Department of Parks and Public Property has determined a need to refund families now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Treasurer Bean is hereby authorized to refund payments for recreation programs in the amounts listed below to our neighbors at ninety-two Woodford for K hoops in the amount of one hundred and twenty dollars for this year, and our neighbors at three thirty-one Park Avenue, number seven, for our pickleball program in the amount of one hundred and fifty dollars also for this year. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petraco.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Scarpelli?
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas bids for the two thousand and twenty-four CDBG Prospect Street intersection improvements were received and opened on Wednesday, February twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five. Whereas D and L paving construction, six seventy-five Franklin Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey, was the lowest responsible bidder. Whereas the base bid for the two thousand and twenty-four CDBG Prospect Street intersection improvements is an amount of four hundred and sixty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixteen cents for a total bid of four hundred and sixty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixteen cents. And whereas this award of this contract is subject to the availability and appropriation of sufficient funds from the Essex County Community Development Block Grant Account, T nineteen, nine oh nine, nine oh one, in the amount of two hundred thousand, and Budget Account, G oh four, one six two, four oh one, in the amount of one hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars and forty-two cents, and Budget Account, G oh four, one six seven, four oh one, in the amount of five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars and ninety-three cents, and Budget Account, number G oh four, one seven oh, four oh one, in the amount of ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and one dollars and eighty-one cents. Subject to this caveat, have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer and certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that a contract be awarded to D and L paving construction for the total amount, total bid in the amount not to exceed four hundred and sixty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixteen cents, and that the mayor and the township clerk are hereby authorized to enter into and sign said contract, but the township Nutley subject to final approval and funding by the Essex County Community Development Block Grant. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petraco.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Scarpelli. Commissioner Petraco?
Whereas the Governor's Council on Substance Use Disorder established the municipal alliance for prevention of substance use disorder in nineteen eighty-nine to educate and engage residents, local government, law enforcement officials, schools, nonprofit organizations, the faith, community, parents, youth, and other allies in efforts to prevent substance use disorder in communities throughout New Jersey. Whereas the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, recognizes that substance use disorder is a serious problem in our society amongst persons of all ages and therefore has established municipal alliance committee. And whereas the township further recognizes that an incumbent upon not only the public officials, but upon the entire community to take action to prevent substance use disorder in our communities. And whereas the Township of Nutley has applied for funding to the Governor's Council on Substance Use Disorder through the County of Essex, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners in the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, hereby recognizes the following: the Township, Borough, City, Council, does hereby authorize submission of the strategic plan for the name Municipal Alliance Grant for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six in the amount of, the grant is ten thousand, five hundred, cash mount match is two thousand, six hundred and twenty-five, and kind is seven thousand, eight hundred, seventy-five dollars. The township acknowledges that the terms and conditions for administering a municipal alliance grant, including the administrative compliance and order requirements. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petraco.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have two resolutions on for this evening. The first one is on behalf of the entire Board of Commissioners, and this is related to the continuing, an ongoing redevelopment in the On Three redevelopment area. And this is for a traffic consultant to tell, to review the impact of potential development on our traffic. Whereas the Township of Nutley has a need to retain professional services